Would you provide an invocation, please?
Father, we thank you for this time that we can come together on this cool night and the night that you made, and we're so grateful for that. You're such a good God and loving God, and a God that shows us love. Father, we, uh, you have given us the opportunity to serve you, and we also know that the land that you've given us stewards, these stewards, uh, we can't take it with us, but we need to be good stewards while we're here. So we ask for your wisdom and your guidance, and we ask all these things in Jesus Christ our Lord's sake. Amen.
What we have next on the agenda are approval of minutes for November sixteen, twenty twenty one, December nine, twenty twenty one, December sixteen, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion to approve all those minutes or any particular item?
No vote.
Motion approving all three. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Abstentions, abstentions. The ayes have it. The first, the next item of business is the election of the chairman for to take any nominations for the position of chairman for the planning commission of Notaway County for the calendar year twenty twenty two.
I have a nomination for Mr. Perry. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I make a motion to close the floor for nominations.
I have a motion to close the floor. Do I have a second?
Sir.
I have a second, thank you. All those in favor of closing the nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Hearing none? The nominations are closed. Now for the matter of chairmanship, Mr. Perry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? And with that, Chairman Perry, I relinquish the gavel to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I just want to thank you that we got the commission for allowing me to serve another year. Next on the agenda is the election of vice chairman for the year twenty twenty two. My nomination for Mr. Perry Walker.
I second.
The probably moved in second that Mr. Perry Walker be serving as the vice chairman for the year twenty twenty two. Motion to close the floor for nominations, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
We move in second that we close the floor for nominations. All in favor of Mr. Perry becoming the vice chairman of the planning commission. Let's raise our hand. Opposed? Okay. Mr. Walker will be serving as vice chairman for the year twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda is the set date time and place of the monthly meetings. We currently have a meeting now on the third Tuesday night of each month at seven P. M. Any changes to that? Is that agreeable with everyone's permission?
It's still within fifty years.
Yeah, it's worth five for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Without having a motion, we can all keep the same time and place, but we need a motion on.
The probably moved in second that the time and place will remain the same for the year twenty twenty two. All in favor, once again, let's raise our right hand. Opposed? Okay, so the public hearing, number one, special exception for Mr. Darrell Webb. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the planning commission, ladies and gentlemen, good evening and happy new year. The first item that we have under public hearings is a special exception for Darrell Webb. I'd like to note at this time that all the public hearings have been advertised as required by section fifteen point two, twenty four zero, uh, twenty four zero five, the code of Virginia, as amended. It's my pleasure, the public files have been and are available in the offices of the county administration building. Again, this first public hearing, special exception for Darrell Webb, this is a manufactured home placement. Uh, this is actually a redo of sorts. Uh, Mr. Webb received a special exception for the same use. Unfortunately, that structure was destroyed in the fire over two years ago, and therefore it lost its non-conforming or grandfathered status. So he's asking to be able to replace another mobile home on the property. The staff has reviewed this request to include a site visit against the criteria established in the zoning ordinance at section five dash five dash two colon eight of the Notaway, of the zoning ordinance. The property is owned conservation one. The district description notes that portions of the county which are occupied by a mix of rural residential uses and open spaces. The comprehensive plan designates the area and describes it in much the same manner. The area reflects the descriptions contained in both documents, and the reestablishment of manufactured home for residential purposes fits these descriptions. As this property has been developed in a residential manner, impacts are found to be minimal. However, to, as to refuse management, staff recommends condition two because of the time and on-site water provision and wastewater treatment facilities have been out of use, staff recommends condition three. That's like, that third condition is recommended by the health department simply to let them get their eyes on it, take a look at it, because it's been out of use for so long. And then the, uh, the second condition there, uh, there's a small debris pile left on the property. I think that's from the, uh, from the fire. I'd like to have that removed from the property. In total consideration of all criteria, staff recommends approval of four conditions. I've already addressed two and three. Condition number one is a standard condition that identifies the use and the location, and standard condition four, which basically states that if the other conditions are not followed, then the special exception can be revoked. I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would speak against or for this request, for or against Mr. Webb, is the, is the audience? Okay. Commissions, you all have the, uh, well, I'm going to close the public hearing. And commissions, you all have heard the requests coming from Darrell Webb to place a manufactured home on the land that was previously burned down. Any comments on the question?
Well, Mr. Chairman, seeing as this is just a replacement man's home that burned down, I see no, no issue with allowing him to rebuild, so I move to approve the special exception. The replacement of the manufactured home with the conditions recommended by the staff.
I'll second it. It's been moved in probably second that the, uh, commission will approve this to the board of supervisors on the conditions that were recommended by the staff. All in favor, let's raise our right hand. Opposed? Have that same right. Okay. This will be recommended to the board of supervisors for approval. Special exception number two, Mr. Scott.
Again, thank you. The special exceptions, Kathy White, representing the W. Lunsford Living Trust, is for a cemetery on property identified as tax map thirty one, one forty nine, the zoning of which is agricultural. Staff has reviewed this request to include a site visit against the criteria established in the zoning ordinance for the review of special exceptions. The area is viewable for the proposed use is occupied by a mix of rural residential uses such as open fields, woodlands, homes, and a church, Belfast Baptist, and thus the area reflects the description contained in both the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. The subject property is nearly eighty acres in size and developed with a home site. The property has also been put to agricultural and forestry use. Based on consultations with the, the family desires to establish a family cemetery on a portion of the property that lies adjacent to an established cemetery on land owned by the church in which operates their own cemetery. Approximately thirty graves are anticipated. The size specified in condition one, and that's a thirty by thirty foot area, will allow for this number in some spacing for passageways. As its use will be private and not commercial, will be most active during burial services, lesser with occasional visits, but routinely inactive, impacts will be significant, will be insignificant. However, groundwater concerns are expressed by the Virginia Department of Health, and they recommend condition two. And also, in anticipation that this portion of land might in the future, one day, be cut off from the parent track, that a thirty-foot easement be in, put in place at that time, and that easement, according to the entrance to that easement with the Virginia Department of Transportation highway system, be coordinated with that agency. In total of all criteria, staff recommends approval with four conditions. I've explained the second and third one to you, and again, the standard condition number one, the standard condition number four. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Father, are currently graves already owned this area, or are they just adjacent?
They're adjacent. They're adjacent. As, uh, Ms. White explained to me, her father and a brother are on the cemetery property of the church. The family wants to come in behind that. So this would be immediately adjacent. Uh, there's a fence line that distinguishes behind those two graves, and we're talking about a thirty by thirty plot around that. But yes, sir, immediately adjacent.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Hey, let me ask you one quick question. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a little bit later. So, so the health department, I know they've called, said no greater than a hundred feet down, floating the water supply. How do we, how do we police that? I mean, that's really hard to do in, you know, you think about it. I mean, we don't know when somebody will use the grave, and the health department wouldn't get called and go after that.
Well, uh, Mr. Scott, the, the, the placement that we're looking at is the closest well right now is over a hundred feet, and that's the well used by the parsonage for the, for the church.
Right.
This area would actually be equal to or further back away from that existing well. The well, the, for the, the improved house, the improvement on the property, the house is several hundred feet further away. Um, it would be something that, once we've got it documented on the map, the health department, when they do go out and do their sightings for wells, they would have to take that into, into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone here that will speak for or against the same as every question? Anybody here that will speak for or against? Okay, I want to close the public hearing. Commissions, you all have heard the request? What's your pleasure? Any other questions that we need to hear before we, uh, because this is what we're looking at.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, when this call is voted, I'd like to just stay ex-voting on this. My wife is in the family.
Okay. Okay. Okay, commissions?
Make a motion to approve the special exception.
You said motion to approve?
Yes, I am. I know that had words.
Okay, we have a motion. How long?
Is that with the conditions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We probably move in second that we will accept the recommendations coming from the administration for the cemetery, the board of supervisors. All in favor, let's raise our right hand. Opposed? Have that same right. Okay, this will be recommended to the board of supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for everyone's awareness, these two matters, the Webb special exception, the White special exception, will be heard by the board of supervisors Thursday night. The next item is the solar energy facilities ordinance, and my presentation will be very short. As you all know, the former interim county administrator, Mr. John Anzavina, picked up this project, and he has carried on in, as a transition advisor, and is carrying this project and a couple others. I want to personally thank him for all the time and energy and effort that he's given this, because it's allowed me to focus on, on other matters. But at this time, I want to turn the presentation over to Mr. Anzavina.
Thank you, Ted. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, members of Notaway citizens, and other interested parties. I'm here this evening to brief you very quickly on the proposed changes to the current renewable energy ordinance, part of the zoning ordinance for Notaway County. I've been coordinating this, working with a variety of different groups and people, including the renewable energy subcommittee of the planning commission, the planning commission, the Rural Solar Development Coalition, which we're, which Notaway is a member of, and is comprised of rural counties in Southside Virginia, is focused just on solar issues, and the board of supervisors, which participated in the joint work session last month. This has come to the forefront because the board of supervisors in December of twenty twenty imposed a moratorium on receipt of applications. I think everybody recognizes that, um, solar is becoming more and more a part of energy production in the United States, and Southside Virginia is an attractive place for solar, primarily because it's rural, it's got a lot of open land, and there, at one time, was a strong appetite for solar in Southside Virginia. Now, there have not been, there have been some successes, and there have been some problems with development of solar facilities, and the board of supervisors in December of twenty twenty, with changes in state legislation, which allowed the county greater control of applications and revenue generating opportunities for solar, said, "Let's, uh, put the brakes on this and not accept any more applications and not process any applications until we evaluate the ordinance." So this process started in January of twenty twenty one, when the planning commission was assigned this task by the board to take a look at the ordinance. The Rural Renewable Energy Subcommittee was formed, and then you had the ice storm. And, uh, let's hope we don't repeat that, because I've heard a lot about that when I was here as your administrator. I'm glad I wasn't here. Um, but we picked this up in August, and we've been working with you folks, as well as the Rural Solar Development Coalition, to craft an ordinance which incorporates the better pieces of ordinances in, uh, from other counties in Southside Virginia and throughout the state. It's been reviewed by your county attorney, it's been reviewed by the Rural Solar Development Coalition on a number of occasions, and it is now being presented to the planning commission for your consideration. For the benefit of the public who have not, may not have had the opportunity to review the, uh, the draft ordinance, uh, I'd want to touch on a couple of the key features. Uh, this still requires, and you have not only solar, but wind energy as part of this section of the zoning ordinance, and it does require a special exception for each application and each use of solar or wind in Notaway County. Uh, the key features of the ordinance which are being kept include solar energy. We're also adding battery storage, which I think you heard at the December meeting, was becoming a bigger part of storage of solar and solar facilities here in Virginia and throughout the country. And special exceptions are required for solar and battery facilities in the same districts, the A-one district, the C-one district, the industrial light, industrial general districts. It does not change the requirements for placing solar panels on a house or individual business. And those are, those are allowed under the building permit process and zoning permit process for those individual properties. Now, what changes are being produced, are being proposed? We expand the ordinance and its definitions considerably to include battery energy storage facilities, as I said, and we identify, and we delineate large solar facilities and small solar facilities. A large full solar facility is four acres or more in land area, generating more than two hundred kilowatts per, uh, per facility. A small solar facility is less than four acres and less than two hundred kilowatts, uh, generated. That is currently not defined in your ordinance, so that is now defined. We expand the public review opportunities. Uh, there is required, in this ordinance, a pre-meeting between the applicant and county representatives prior to submission of the application, to talk about the feasibility and to talk about the ordinance, to talk about the requirements, and get a sense of, you know, the seriousness of the application. Uh, the public review is carried on to, uh, a requirement that the applicant, when the application is filed, have an independent public meeting duly advertised with the same legal requirements of a public hearing, and they present to the, the neighbors and citizens of the county, of the facility, what they're proposing. You will still have a public hearing at the planning commission stage, once the application is deemed final, and that would then be your recommendation for approval, denial, or modification of the special exception conditions would then be passed on to the board of supervisors, just like with any other special exception permit. We also have included in there, uh, and strengthened the language, for what is called a twenty-two thirty-two review. That is a, a review of the proposed facility to ensure the proposed facility meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan, uh, which is the basis for all your land use decisions. The, uh, the ordinance also establishes sighting criteria prohibiting the sighting of large-scale solar energy and battery energy storage facilities within one mile of an incorporated town, uh, reserving the open land around those towns for future expansion of the town, since they have utilities, and there may be some opportunities for job creation and residential development. Um, it, it restricts the density of facilities in the county. That is, no large-scale solar energy facility shall be approved for use within two miles of the defined project area of another existing solar facility. Um, requires a site plan for small-scale solar facilities, those are less than four acres, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, and has certain requirements from the large-scale review applied to the, uh, to the small-scale review. It includes language for third-party review fees, because this is a complicated process. This, this isn't a simple process. If you're going to get it right, you need to employ some outside assistance in the form of engineers and experts to assist county staff. You know, this is something which is highly technical, and this would be paid for by the applicant at the county's request. It establishes new setback criteria for the facilities in the zoning districts, and makes it more, more restrictive. It's expanding the setbacks to, um, a hundred feet from public right-of-ways, three hundred feet from habitable dwellings, and a hundred feet from adjacent property lines. Currently, in the districts, it varies, but in most cases, it's minimum, uh, it's, it's less than what the, uh, the minimum is of the proposed ordinance. It establishes a fifty-foot buffer inside the required setback area, that is, not be in, outside the setback area, that hundred feet or, or so. But within that setback area, consisting of existing vegetation and additional plantings if necessary, and, and speaks on a number of occasions in the ordinance to using native vegetation, native types of species for planting, uh, as was recommended by Susan Seward from the RSDC. It directs the applicant to utilize natural buffer where possible, rather than clear-cutting and starting all over again, because that doesn't make any sense. Um, it expands requirements for coordination with emergency management and traffic coordination, and specifies the county may require a lot of additional information as part of the application process. Uh, due, due to the potential impacts upon prime, prime, uh, prime farmlands or agricultural lands, high-valued forested areas, it'll require, it can require a, a report in it from an independent third-party appraiser on impact upon property values. It does require reports on historic resources impact and traffic to both, uh, pre and, during, during and post construction. The ordinance also requires erosion, sediment control, and stormwater management plans, meaning state requirements. They must be submitted and approved by the, by the, submitted and approved by the county and or appropriate state agencies. Currently, the county has opted to, on stormwater, allow DEQ to review and approve plans. Requires a Virginia Cultural Resource Information System report identifying historical, archaeological, and, uh, resources on or near this proposed facility, and it allows the zoning administrator, the planning commission, or the board of supervisors to require a wide range of different types of reports to answer questions which you may have, the zoning administrator may have, the board of supervisors may have, in conjunction with the application. And that include, includes, uh, an economic impact analysis by an independent third party that reports any expected changes in value of the subject property, expected employment during construction of the facility, any expected impacts on the county's tax revenues, estimated costs of county services required by the facility, and any other economic benefits or burdens that may request, uh, benefit information that may be requested by the zoning administration. In addition, potential impacts on wildlife and wildlife habitats within a two-mile radius of the project area, with the information provided by the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources or an independent individual, glare studies, pollinator habitat studies, uh, as an impact on groundwater, and, uh, other studies relating to the impact of the project on recreational areas such as parks, battlefields, trails, lakes, rivers, and creeks, and a range of other factors. It expands decommissioning language and requires a decommissioning plan for all solar-related facilities, which is to be updated five year, every five years at the owner's expense, supported by financial security acceptable to the county, and lists a variety of so, of, uh, different types of financial security which may be acceptable, but which may be expanded. Um, and as I noted, it does include some development standards for wind farms, but we did not modify those. Those are something to address in the future. Uh, so that's a brief summary of the ordinance and the changes that have been made. Happy to answer any questions that you might have before the public hearing starts or after the public hearing has been finished. And your next steps are to essentially- And, uh, your next steps are to essentially hear the public, uh, discuss the proposed changes in the ordinance, and if you feel it, uh, appropriate to move it forward to the Board of Supervisor as is or with modifications. So, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing for the renewable energy ordinance. First of all, I want to ask, does anybody here to speak for, or against? For, or against? Yes, ma'am.
Um, yeah, I'd like to speak against.
If you would stand and come forward and let us have your name.
Hi, my name is Judy Brothers. I'm from Mecklenburg County, actually, and I'm just here to let you know that Chase City has several large solar facilities that we have had a lot of issues with. We have recently stopped the Seven Bridges Project, the second time coming in on top of our existing grasshopper project that's there, that's a 500-acre facility that's owned by Dominion and has got major erosion issues. They have completely silted out Butchers Creek and has putting a plume out into our car lake, and it's been, I guess, five years now, and they have not been able to get that under control. So, and then there's another project there also called Bluestone, and that is also beginning to silt out the Bluestone Creek. And so there's been a couple of violations there, and that's been an issue also. So we really need to kinda look at that when you're talking about the Notaway River, you know, and the fact that that's the water supply for, I think, Victoria and for Fort Pickett. So, you know, um, it's, it's probably not the best area as far as erosion, something that needs to be looked at. So, thank you very much.
I'm speaking against. My name is, uh, Richard Ingram. Most of y'all know me as Dicky. I've been a lifelong resident in Notaway County. I've taught in the public school system 39 years. I have, uh, my family's been in the county for over 200 years. The family farm is like a quarter mile from where this proposed mega thing is supposed to go. I was reading through this briefly, and it says, 100 feet from adjacent property lands. Well, I'm a baseball coach. 90 feet is home plate to first base. Y'all know how far that is? And you gonna have 50 feet buffer in there? Uh-uh. That's, that's ludicrous. There's historic resources right there, Mount Zion Church, Hyde Park Farm is across the road, which is a registered historic landmark. There are families that live on all sides of it. Uh, the water is what really bothers me, both the groundwater and the erosion. Hamilton's Pond is right there, it's a major recreational area. You've got Notaway Falls. If you go over Notaway Falls after hard rain, you see how much water's going over that dam. Just imagine what it would be like. And of course, that's the water supply for the town of Victoria. And downstream, it's the town of Blackstone, and it's Fort Pickett. I just don't see these things, you know, and it catches me, being a lifelong resident, I've heard this before, because Southside Virginia is an attractive location for solar facilities due to its low population density. That's how we got prisons in Southside Virginia. The state came down and said, "Oh, we'll put our prisons in Southside Virginia because they'll give them some jobs." Where are the prisons in Northern Virginia? Let me know. There are none that I know of. I think they closed Lorton, and that's about the only one. So, they lure us in, they wave that carrot in front of us, and say, "Oh, we gonna create jobs." I don't see any jobs coming out of this. The only people that are gonna profit from that proposed one is the company that's leasing the land, which is based in Jackson, Mississippi, and Solinesco. They're the only people that are gonna profit from that. The county's not gonna profit. Uh, it's just gonna create more and more problems that I, you know, I don't think, you worried about the state, the states up there in Northern Virginia now trying to control Spotsylvania and, and Mecklenburg and Charlotte where they having the problems? They gonna ride down here from Richmond to check us out? I don't think so. I hope that y'all will take this into consideration. Uh, you know, I just don't. I'm all in favor, if somebody wants to put a solar panel on their roof or a couple in their yard to power their home, that's great. But when you take five, six, 700 acres of land, which is probably the biggest asset Notaway County's got, forestry might be the best industry we have. And you take that away, I just don't see it. If, if one goes through, more are coming. And that's what frightens me. Thank y'all for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Perry, members of the Planning Commission, citizens. Um, I'm Ricky Rash. I'm here to kinda sorta speak against the ordinance. Um, I'm here more because I believe we can make a better ordinance based on some of the comments you've already heard and hopefully some of them I will make. I will give you some of my background. I live right down the road from the solar site. I drive by it quite often, uh, the land that it's proposed on. I've been a member of the Piedmont Plant and, uh, Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District, uh, Board for over 25 years. I know a lot about runoff from non-point source pollution, um, and I am concerned as much about the water runoff and the Notaway River as anything. There are other concerns that, uh, Mr. Ingram has, has indicated, uh, Ms. Brothers from Chase City. But I did submit a, a four-page written proposal. I don't know whether if you all have that, a copy yet. I won't, uh, insult your intelligence by reading the whole thing to you, but I will go through and try to highlight some stuff. In my role as a Piedmont Director, I've been elevated in the state to a, a past president of our state association, our VACO equivalent, um, and I am now current Legislative Committee Chairman for all state, uh, issues. And so in my capacity within that, um, I've heard enough about, um, pipelines, uranium mining, um, other issues dealing with, um, with agriculture. I know about the ethanol, renewable fuels way back when, switchgrass and hemp, and now it looks like solar is probably one of the newer things. But I'll start out with my opening statement. I, I look at the ordinance, and it's clear that somebody, Mr. Anzavino, has done his job. He's put a lot of things forward. But for several reasons, I think it's premature to pass this ordinance tonight, um, and I feel that you should not take any action at night. The General Assembly just convened. We have a new governor. We have a new, um, environmental field within the, this administration. And, um, just a quick glance today, you have four bills there that I, I listed, I think, uh, might impact any action you take tonight to pass on. You may have to come back and revisit it later, or the Board of Supervisors will have to revisit it. The first one is, um, the size of permit by rule. It's gonna reduce, if the bill passes, from 150 megawatts down to 20 megawatts. Within the ordinance, you talk about only 200 kilowatts. So, this proposed facility is, I believe, 130 megawatts? So it's a much, much, much larger facility than what your ordinance mentions. The other thing is politically, uh, going back to the administration, there's another bill to remove us from the, uh, zero-carbon emissions that should, um, deal with the, um, gas, coal-fired industry, and I don't know how that would affect this ordinance down the road. So, at the very least, for those reasons, I think we should delay adoption of any ordinance to give you some more time to look over a few things, at least for 60 or 90 days, at least until the General Assembly finishes up and the veto session is done. I, I think that's just prudence. The permit by rule with all of the state agencies, um, within the ordinance, Mr. Anzavino, uh, discussed many of those. I need clarification myself as I read the ordinance if the county specifications supersede the DEQ specifications and the other state specifications. I'm not sure at that, and I'll be glad to tell you, I spent two and a half hours with these three guys back here today on-site looking around, and I asked a lot of questions. And to their credit, they answered a lot of questions. But I still have concerns. There are other agencies up there, uh, Department of Historic Resources, Hyde Park is something that we need to look at. I believe that any ordinance needs to be fleshed out better than what you have in the ordinance. I think we probably need to have a few more details, quite a few more details. I'm certainly not as comfortable with the ordinance as written as Mr. Anzavino, and, um, I would suggest that the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors get together and ride around and look at a few of these sites. Come over to Mecklenburg and, and see the horror story that they brought. Some of the early solar farms are not working as well as they should be. So we have room for improvement. Let's learn from everybody else's mistakes. And I believe in December, Ms. Seward said the same thing with Sussex County, that they had made some mistakes and they've rectified them. Well, let's try to get it right now and not have to rectify. That's my whole point. CBS6, um, has reported on off-site runoff. Uh, the layout of this particular property that's in question, but it will happen in other areas of the county, you have to be worried about other property owners, downstream property owners. Uh, the CBS6 documentary, uh, by, um, that was done, it showed about 12 to 15 inches of soil had cut out under the root beds of trees on the off-site. That was in Louisa County. That was an 1,100-acre site. And on public record, one of the supervisors said, "We should never permit a site that large ever again." So they've made some mistakes. That's, that's a place to go. Within the proposed ordinance, it does say in there, talking about the productivity of the land, uh, being an agriculture producer semi-retired, I'm very proud of the fact that agriculture producers feed 155 people per day. Notaway County has, has grown because of agriculture and forestry. It may not have the standing that it once had, but it's still our heritage and it's still something that with a growing rural population, we're gonna need land. It had a, a, a public hearing earlier about a cemetery, and a, a man at my church, Mr. Ingram's church, the church we grew up in, was talking about, he wanted to make sure that his cemetery was cared for in perpetuity. And, um, we have the funds to do that at our church, but, um, I told him if times get tight enough, they'll bust up all those headstones and use them for rocking a road and plant peas on top of the graves. If you get hungry enough, that's what will happen. And, um, I don't think you have to look any further than China or India to see that that's happening over there in many, many places, but I digress. Hiring engineering firms to keep up with this site is, is the way to go. I don't think there's any question. I don't think one person, um, a county building inspector that's trained in ENS, if you flipped the tide around at 2,400 acres, and, and I'm told that it won't be quite that large, um, the outer perimeter of it, but could one building inspector keep up with 2,400 homes? An acre-four home is, is just a, a guess. And just to give some of you some reference, a football field, goal line to goal line is slightly more than an acre. That's 45,000 square feet. One acre of land is 43,560 square feet. So if you do the math and you look at it, um, you got a whole lot of football fields out there. So, relying on state agencies, I think you need to have some way with the engineering firm, once again, to oversee the project from start to finish, not only approve the process, but to oversee it, to manage it. Your state agencies are overworked, they're understaffed, and they have multiple sites that they need to go visit at any one time. You're not gonna get somebody to come from Richmond or Lynchburg from a DEQ office out here soon enough after a major rainfall event to see if everything on the site has held up the way it was designed. And if you get 12 inches of rain like we did in 2018 with Hurricane Michael, none of it's gonna work. And that's a reality, but we don't have 12 inches of rain like a Michael that often. But we do have three and four-inch thunderstorms quite regular. I say to you tonight that if this site was a 2,400-acre livestock farm, whether it be poultry, hogs, or dairy, you would have this courtroom packed with people coming in here looking at this ordinance to see how it managed. I remember back when we dealt with hogs way back before I was ever thinking about getting involved in politics. So, um, and quite honestly, I believe an agricultural site in today's world, knowing what I know about the permitting and required, I think you'd be far safer as far as water quality runoff to the Notaway River. One of the things that I don't think has been asked or talked about, what about failure of the, of the panels? What about the batteries? What is, what is the process in case of a fire? What do you do, um, with any material that has to come off the site? Is our county landfill gonna accept it? Is there a landfill close by that will accept it? I'm sure you can charge Solinesco, the owners, to put this back, but we're talking about the ordinance. What can the county do? And in light of that, if the county makes a decision through the Board of Supervisors to accept it, to solid waste people, what happens to the leachate? Are there toxic materials in there? Can the water treatment plants here in Notaway County, Crewe or Blackstone handle that toxic leachate that might come out of it? I think this is something that we need to look at seriously now. Not only the water downstream and the water treatment cost, but the leachate coming out that's gonna come out of the current county landfill. Just to give you some size parameters, at, at 2,400 acres, give or take, um, that's three points, it's almost four square miles. I think Mr. Ingram told me it was 3.75 square miles based on the acres that he had. Just to give you some idea, that's larger than the town of Blackstone. The footprint, pick 'em up, set 'em side by side, and they'll cover one another up. So it is a quite large site. And with a site that big, a square mile is 640 acres. From what I learned today, the site that they're actually going to put panels on, on all of the rises out there on the material, see, I'm helping you guys out some. Not much, but some. Will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 680, 700 acres. It won't be the full site, but you never know when the next company comes in what it will be. They may try to go corner to corner. So we have to consider the, the ordinance first and the request second. It's just easy to throw rocks at something we can see right now with Solinesco in the site near me. 27,000 gallons of water comes off an acre of impervious surface. That's an inch of rain that comes off. 100% of that runs off. If you change the land used from forest to a glass parking lot, as Ms. Seward said, those panels, you're gonna have a lot more runoff coming off. You're gonna have a lot more runoff going down. How do you mitigate all of that runoff into those bottoms, into those creeks, into Hamilton's Pond, the Notaway River, town of Victoria, and subsequently, um, the lake at Pickett, Pickett Reservoir? These are all things that I think you need to, to look at as far as the ordinance goes because no matter where you put it, it's, water's going downhill. Solinesco, I believe is sincere. I spoke with them today at length. They answered every question I had. I just think, I feel more comfortable that the more we can put into this zoning ordinance, the better off I will feel and the better off the citizens of the county will feel. The unintended consequences are legal fees. I'm told that a company the size of Sands Anderson, just to deal with a solar farm ordinance, charges about $100,000 per year in a retainer. Where are you gonna come up with that as a county? That's a lot of legal fees. And that's in addition to the Planning Commission and, um, the Electoral Board and everything else that the county has to come up with in legal fees. and everything else that the county has to come up with in legal fees. Where is that gonna come from? Can you put that into the ordinance that the owner of the property, the user of the property, has to help the county out with those fees? The revenue. What does the real estate tax generate? What does a penny generate? What is the revenue gonna be from this site? And any site, is the revenue going to outpace what a small tax increase is? And you have to think about it that if it's in your backyard, how much more in Notaway County taxes am I willing to pay so I don't have to look at it? How much are you willing to pay extra if it comes into my area and lowers my property values? Are you willing to pay because I'm gonna be paying less taxes? These are all things that you have to find a balance. And I thank your ordinance, while it might be cumbersome at 17 pages. I would rather see a few more details in the ordinance than pass it as is tonight, primarily because of legislation, but because I have many unanswered questions. And I'll close by reading my final statement that I sent to you all. "I am not as opposed to the solar ordinance as my remarks might indicate, but I will fight to get our county ordinance right before proceeding to accept any application. In summary, consider the unintended consequences." Thank you.
Absolutely. My name is Seth Lusolunesco. You've heard my company come a few times tonight. We are hoping to be able to submit our project for submittal soon. It seems people are already well aware of it, and it's, it's come up. Want to thank everyone that spoke tonight. There's some good questions asked. I do believe that the ordinance addresses a lot of that. Do you want to note that the number 2,400 acres has come up a lot? We are not proposing a 2,400 acre solar site. We are proposing a solar site with a footprint of 690 acres. Still large, but the number 2,400 keeps coming up. We've gotten pegged with that number, and it, what we are going to propose, assuming this ordinance passes, is something quite a bit smaller than that. So just want to make that clear on the record. Now, the topic tonight, of course, is the ordinance itself. You know, a couple of questions that have come up regarding landfill, toxic leaching. I, I don't know of any examples of toxic leaching other than, you know, Google, if you Google "bad solar," you know, you get these, these stories that aren't really news about toxic leaching that can go into the ground. I, I have yet to see a legitimate case of toxic leaching. These panels use mostly benign glass, steel materials, and, you know, very trace amounts of stuff that you'd see in a cellphone or in a car or, or any other piece of electronics that you would use. The, the idea of toxic leaching is frankly, an anti-solar scare tactic that is not based in reality. The, the question about landfills and, and, you know, who cleans up, who pays for it, that's all addressed in, in the decommissioning section of your ordinance. We will submit a decommissioning plan. It will clarify where these panels would go at, at the end of their life. If the county doesn't like it, they can reject that decommissioning plan, and we'll work with the county to come up a plan that does work before anything's put in the ground. And we'll be put in place finances to ensure that this, that, that the project can be decommissioned in, in the, in the way that it's been proposed, prior to anything going into the ground. In general, I just want to say thanks for, for all the hard work and putting into this ordinance. This is probably the most thorough ordinance that we've seen here in Virginia. And we've, we've been a part of a lot of counties that are working their way through this process. It's very thorough, very detailed. As was pointed out, it's 17 pages long already. We also want to say that we believe that we can develop our project in accordance with this ordinance. Despite its thoroughness, we're, we're supportive of it, and, and we're really eager to, to allow the county to, to begin to review our project on its merits. We would like to note that not every project's the same. The SCP process allows the county to review each project on its merits, decide if it's an appropriate land use, and decide what conditions are appropriate for that project. If you feel like there is an environmental concern and you feel like the state's not addressing that concern adequately, you can put a condition on that. You can hire a, a third-party engineer to review a, a project and determine if they think that there's environmental concerns or engineering concerns if you don't feel like you have the expertise in-house. That's all in the ordinance already. And I just want to remind this body that, that, you know, it has the power to, to come up with conditions and to work with third-party engineers and to look at each project, each of which will be very different on its own merits. And a longer and, and more detailed ordinance will just create a situation where, where projects are excluded from even being able to be considered because they don't, they don't fit into a box. The more details you have in your ordinance, and we've seen this happen in other counties, it starts to become a de facto moratorium all over again. You have the power to look at each project on its merits and to assess whatever conditions you want on it. And you have the power to hire the appropriate people to review them and, and to put those conditions on. You know, there's, right now, I think the ordinance is good. I, I think there's a lot of, of guidance for this body and how it assesses these projects without any absolutes. There's a couple of things that I think are absolutes, that I think may be mistakes, such as the density section. Right now, you know, you might have a situation where a school has a, has a exhibition project that's five acres and a, a, a larger project like ours that would be a great tax generator and is well-screened, and, and no one's even gonna know who's there, wants to come along and develop. And they can't even put an application in because they're a mile and a half away from this five-acre school exhibition project. Things like that. Once you start putting too many details into an ordinance, you can start to screen out projects that, that might be good and that the county might want to consider, but just can't. So just want to put that reminder out there. We are all for ensuring all the things that these people are concerned about, they're good concerns. And we've also brought our, our consultant from Kimley Horn, who represents ourselves and many other solar projects and can probably speak a lot better to a lot of these environmental concerns, but they are dealt with. But I just do want to put that out there. We're, we're supportive of the ordinance as is. It's very robust as is when compared to other counties. It's very well thought out. We thank you for your hard work on it. And remind you that you guys maintain the power to review each project on its merits and determine whether it's appropriate and what restrictions you might want to put in place. And, and just remind you to, 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 to consider that when you're thinking about maybe making this more robust. I think it's where it needs to be, and we're very, very excited to put this project out there and allow it to start to be reviewed. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. As Seth alluded to, my name is Cutter Sidner. I'm a licensed civil engineer in Virginia. I'm from Richmond County, out on the northern neck. Work in Richmond, and I've been working on solar projects for several years now, specifically on the civil and environmental side. Supported many projects upfront, dealing with ordinances and concept plans all the way through detailed construction drawings, including supporting two projects in my home county, in Richmond County, one of which is almost under construction now. There are three points I wanted to make about the ordinance. Unlike some other folks, I, I don't have much to say about the project, but I have a few things based on the ordinance that I wanted to touch on. The first, I think Seth did a great job explaining. I've worked on a lot of concept plans and zoning applications where the flexibility for you guys to look at projects on a case-by-case basis and determine where is the best place to get this benefit is really valuable. And the criteria that excludes certain projects that may check a lot of boxes, but not one, may be something where flexibility is more pertinent than too many restrictions. So I would support the ordinance as is. I would agree with Seth that out of the projects I've done, you guys have put in maybe the most work out of any county. Certainly one of the best and most robust ordinance that I've worked with in my career as an engineer dealing with these projects. The second point I wanted to make is that the state protections are extensive. So your ordinance addresses compliance with stormwater management and erosion control regulations, both at the county and state level. Those requirements set a baseline far and away above what's required of timber use or agricultural use. The wetland setbacks, the stormwater detention, the regulations in both the ENS code and then the stormwater code that DEQ enforces for Notaway. Those protections are very stringent. They meet the same protections as any development does, rather than another rural land use, like I said, like timber and ag, that has different protections. So the kind of design and engineering that will go into that plan is extreme. It's tedious, and it goes through a lot of review before that's going in the ground. The successful projects are quiet and unseen, just like Seth has pointed out. If it's well-screened and it goes well, you don't know it's there. And there are a lot of those projects that I've worked on, despite the few that bubble up and make the news and have those issues. And I'll point out that in my research into those issues, the state penalties are severe and significant, and the action is ongoing. The last thing I'll say is, as Ricky pointed out, we spent quite a lot of time with him today, talked about a lot of this. We had some discussion about the General Assembly and some bills that are on the table. A lot of those address the PBR process or some of these other permitting rules at the state level that they are significant, but a parallel process to a land use discussion. So a lot of those things are things that affect projects, but not necessarily in a way that change what we're looking at from a land use perspective or the, you know, really what the relevant and appropriate setbacks or criteria are directly in the ordinance to protect public and welfare of the county and its citizens. So I'll go ahead and close out, keep it short. I will say that, like Ricky said, I would suggest you guys go look at a few. And I might name a few dozen other projects that are well-screened, that have green grass growing, that are putting power on the grid into local distribution and transmission lines, and that have been successful behind the scenes because we've been building these five, six, seven years now, all across the Commonwealth, several of your neighboring counties, several counties up and down, north, south, east, west. And I think one of the best things, like he said, is to go check those projects out and see for yourself what this kind of benefit to the county can look like and help you understand how you can incorporate that into an ordinance that lets you reap those rewards and do it appropriately and judge that on a case-by-case basis. So appreciate your time tonight and for listening to thoughts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Skylar Zunk. It's a pleasure to be with the commission this evening here on behalf of Conservatives for Clean Energy and the Land and Liberty Coalition, the branch of Conservatives for Clean Energy, that puts me out in the counties, talking about responsible, conservative, and smart energy policy. This is a new problem and a new opportunity for a lot of counties to be able to debate the merits and demerits of producing energy right here. I had the privilege to serve for almost two years in the Trump administration, doing energy policy at the national level. Going out west, seeing big old dams, oil flats, you name it, and how we can make, you know, America more energy independent and that we can do that same thing here in Virginia. I'm here because my organization wants to see good policy at the county level. I've been to almost two dozen counties, considering ordinances, specific projects, comprehensive plan languages, you name it. Some have done it well, some have, some have done it poorly and had to go back to the drawing board and make major changes to ordinances. I'm not sure what you guys are gonna be doing this evening. If you pass it, there's a lot of things in this ordinance that I think are great. I love the community meetings that you're requiring every large-scale project hold. I think natural buffers, that's smart. There's no sense to clear-cut land that already screens proposed project relatively well. I love the erosion and settlement control aspects. You guys are doing the right thing to protect the neighbors. But there are some concerns I have. We talk about property rights. Your right to use your property how you please, so long as you're not adversely affecting your neighbors. It should be the, the measure by which we measure every sort of energy development or any type of development in general. And then there's economic development opportunities. You guys might know of the SHINE program, who teaches young men and women at Southside Virginia Community College, specifically the Blacks don campus, on how to install these solar developments, how to, you know, get good careers that will last many, many years, good-paying careers. There's a lot of development. You guys are well aware of the tax revenue potentials. But there are things like, you know, the, the definition of what a large-scale project is and what a small-scale project is. I might revisit that. I'd suggest a differentiation at maybe the five-megawatt level. That's what most of the tax laws at the state level are set up to, to, to deal with, below five, over five. And the, the two-mile barrier between projects. I don't think that's fundamentally fair to the people who live near those projects. If I want to put in a five-acre solar project next to a larger project, I think I should be able to do that with, with my own land. The special exception permit or process that you, you all will consider every project that's brought to you by is robust and strong. You guys can give a thumbs up, a thumbs down, or tell that developer to go back to the drawing board. I hope you lean on that heavily when it's time to consider projects. So like I said, I don't know what you're gonna do tonight. If you revisit and decide to study this more, I'd be happy to be a resource to the county. Love to come back. I'm 30 miles up 360 in Chesterfield County and really hope to engage with many of you, many of your citizens, engaging at the grassroots and see good energy policy happen all over Virginia. We're having an event tomorrow night in Richmond with now Attorney General, our new Lieutenant Governor, and many members of the House and the Senate. I'll stick around and share invites with, with all of you if you'd like to go and have these conversations with other counties who have done this before and leaders as they're considering state policy issues. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else? Okay. Want to follow the public hearing? Yes, Ms. Scott.
I'm not sure if it's taped up on the microphone or not, but I just want to make sure for the record, everyone knows that Mr. Rash's communication was distributed to all the members of the planning commission this evening. He made some good points about ordinance first and then get to, to the specific sites. And I just want to be very clear here that the issue before you tonight is just the ordinance. There's no specific application. Now, there was an application that was submitted by Solunesco, and I'm not sure about the timing, before, after the moratorium. Before, thank you. That was held, it was frozen. In fact, the fee that was submitted with that, the check was never cashed, went six months past, so it's been returned. That application would very likely have to be resubmitted if this ordinance in some form or another goes, goes forward to adoption. And again, the issue before you tonight is the ordinance. So what can you do? You may defer this matter for up to 16, 90 days. But at that point, it will have to move on to the board. The board has one year from the date of the amendment application, which was December the 16th, to act on this amendment. You can modify the ordinance. You can accept it as it is. You can reject the ordinance. That recommendation will go to the board. The board will then set a public hearing. And this one, this case is a little different than the two we had earlier this evening. Those two cases, the board has already set their public hearing for two nights from tonight. That's not the case with this. The board will, is going to wait for your recommendation before it decides to even set its public hearing. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time. If not, I'll leave, I'll leave the, the issue to you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Commissions? Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, let me, let's get a little conversation here. So, Mr. Scott, thank you for clarifying that. We're not talking about a particular solar farm site tonight. It should just kind of get in our ordinance. What is the size of Blackstone? It's 600 some acres, that's the size of Burt. We're not talking about that tonight.
Yes, sir.
Kind of get it in order. Because our ordinance is so poor. Mr. Dan, being able to come, we, we don't have really, our ordinance is pretty poor as well, it couldn't have the renewable energy.
I, I would say that your ordinance regarding solar did not have the opportunity to take advantage of all the changes and all the mistakes that have been made, that have been observed, learned through the R S D C. And the ordinance actually had much stronger ordinance than what you currently have. I wouldn't say it's poor. When I first looked at it, you know, it, it had the basic elements of what we currently have, but not, wasn't as expansive. It had a decommissioning plan session, but it wasn't very detailed. Site landscaping plans were accrued by the Planning Commission. No mention of native species, anything like that. The buffers were less, you know, all of this. So what we tried to do is learning from other communities, working with the R S D C, hearing what you said or Suiter said in that one session. What we do to strengthen it, make it better, is perfect, probably not, but it's much stronger than what you currently have.
And Mr. Scott, you said something about the planning commission would table this off.
Your, your options, among your options is you can table this. I believe statutorily you have to act, I don't have to go back, it's either sixty or ninety days. You would have to make some decisions. But you, you do have an option to table this. If you have concerns, back to staff, see, see if we can address those. That's one of your options. So you can recommend that the ordinance not be adopted. We recommend that the ordinance is presented, be adopted, you can defer, ask your staff to do some additional work to address some of the concerns that you have raised this evening. You have some options. The reality is, at some point in time, we're going to have to look this more forward. We live with what we have now, as you heard from Mr. Anzavino. We could be in some of those situations, those, those bad situations that you've heard about.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. You'll take a minute with, um, special budget, or do you want to have any additional questions?
Well, yes, I do have another quick question is, um, so, so members of the public put forth some very good suggestions. Mr. Anzavino?
Yeah.
Sorry, this pronounced that I wanted that there. Would it be possible for you to work some of those suggestions into this and present it in, in sixty days or so?
We have, we need to evaluate some of them, but yes, some of them could be included in revised language in the draft or in discreet consideration. And probably within thirty days as opposed to sixty or ninety.
Okay. Hey, would you be open to making your email or something available so that folks could send this directly to you?
Yeah, if you will, if you would have it sent to me.
Okay.
I'll direct that.
All right, all right. Any, yes, sir. The, the proposed setbacks, where, where did that recommendation come from?
Those were discussions, well, first of all, we looked at a number of ordinances and then we talked to Susan Silver, R S D C, that were used in Sussex County, which they learned from, uh, several applications. That's where they came from.
And, and do we think that three hundred feet from a habit, habit dwelling is sufficient?
That's a policy decision of the Planning Commission or Suiter. Three hundred feet is a hundred yards with screening, which is pretty extensive screening. You know, it, it depends on what the county wants to do with that.
You know, I've, I've, I've made some conversations with people. I, I personally don't think that three hundred feet is enough. I don't think it's fair. And who is not fair to is to a poultry farmer who tried to build some new chicken houses over here in Olive County. And he's got to be a thousand feet from a dwelling. Unless he can get that adjacent dwelling to sign off on the fact that he's not going to eat that, that setback. I personally don't think three hundred feet is sufficient. Is it a thousand feet? I don't know that that's sufficient, too. I think that's a little too, but I don't think three hundred feet is sufficient.
Having prepared the ordinance in Millian County for confinement operations back in the eighties and having to deal with that issue, you know, I would say, where I know confinement operations, they were more extensive than perhaps than they are now. You know, four hundred feet seems a little excessive or a thousand feet seems, certainly seems excessive.
It does seem excessive, I, I think, but I don't know that it's fair.
Oh, and, and is it fair? Probably not. I think Millian's at the climate much less. You know, but, you know, it's each county that makes that decision based upon what feels in the best interest of all the citizens. Certainly, as you consider the setbacks, you know, the setbacks that are, are, are greater than they currently are. But if you do it, they need to be more extensive. You need to take a look. It's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I think I get a little leeway out of here. We should have a lot of conversation with the audience after the closing of the public hearing. And I've got to clarify something with Mr. Rasch. Ricky, um, that Haysfield two of two, who's sponsoring that, that going on a hundred fifty megawatts to twenty megawatts?
Oh, I didn't hear that.
I'll just carry it.
Friday's put the one in about the carbon emissions and... Hmm, I, I, I'm at a loss, Steve. I'm sorry.
I just, I'll do a little homework on that one. I won't have that kind of conversation. I mean, some of these points that Mr. Rasch is making, that the General Assembly could affect some things. And it's Friday, I do have a new administration. You have government? You have ideas?
Mr. Chairman? To Mr. Boyd's point, it is quite well made. We face this every, every July war. We have a General Assembly every year. They pass laws and we have to go back and look at how they affected zoning law, how they affected solar, how they've affected tax rates, how they've affected anything. And so, uh, good practice would be, yeah, after every General Assembly is concluded, you know, what's coming down the line. You sit down, you do a sweep through your, through your policies, your processes, your ordinances, and, and update those, bring those into compliance. So, it's going to be very much a maintenance factor, regardless of what is adopted. It's going to have to be maintained.
Okay, so we can all have heard, um, all the evidence that they say what we wanted to do.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I feel that maybe we should table this for a period of thirty days and to allow time for our commission to take some of these concerns and leave them addressed on this ordinance before we put it up to a vote for adoption.
How's that?
It's a properly voted second that we will table this for approximately thirty days or longer. We don't know, at least thirty days. And, uh, all in favor of that request, the right hand? Oppose?
Obey. Just for record, Boyd respects the opinion of the Planning Commission and I just wanted to hear, I, I want to be able to just give no opinion to Boyd and let him know what y'all have to have to do.
Thank you, Boyd. Okay, has Robyn moved in second that you will, uh?
Mr. Chairman, your final item is just a quick look at next month. You will have one special exception coming before you. In addition, you will take up the matter that you just tabled. I will remind everyone that you have opened and closed your, uh, public hearing on that matter, so no additional public comment will be taken. However, there was the notation about if, if anyone had additional comments or edits, to send those to me. I will forward those to Mr. Anzavino. My card is up here with my email. I will not be at your next meeting. I have an engagement and that will be your first meeting with your new Planning and Economic Development Director, Mr. Greg Zodi. And I'm sorry that I'm not going to be here to introduce you to him at that time. But I will make sure that you have some background information on him and he is well-versed on the special exception case that comes before you as well as the solar issue. Most likely, again, I'll ask Mr. Anzavino to help carry that. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anything else to come before the final committee? Read the chair. Thank you, bye.
Hey, you have a good night.